Okay, we will begin with a prayer, Mr. Bolden.
Just about a moment for our prayer. Father, we want to thank you for another day. We know that this day was not promised for us, but only because of your grace and your mercy, you allowed us to see another day. Father, we ask that you comfort those that has lost love one during these COVID and during these recent storms that have destroyed or damaged homes or business. We ask you to put your loving arms around them, let them know that you will always be with them and that you will provide for their every need. Father, as always, we ask that what we do here this evening be pleasing in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Let's rise for the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should have already called it to order, but I call this meeting to order. And the first thing on the agenda is open forum. And we do have an individual, a citizen, that'd like to speak tonight. Mr. Moore, if you'd come forward.
Jayden brought my own timer. Before I get started, this is about six years ago, we tried to get the open forum passed called Citizen Communication. Mr. Bolden was the only one on the council at that time. And we should all be thankful to Shelley for getting that done. It was really touch and go. It was probably, we all thought it would be a three to two vote, but in the end, it was unanimous. So this is the first time I've spoken in those six years. I wanted to talk to you about your decision to subsidize a single-family detached subdivision, 1.144 million dollars approximately. I think for one lot, that's about 13 years of my taxes. Or if we looked at it another way, we could have spent that same amount of money to subsidize the Nacogdoches Music Fest, which we did for one year, for 23 years, I think is what I counted on. I think that would have been really good economic development, you know, trying to get known as an artistic creative town, you know, and have a long-term commitment to it, you know, two, two, two and a half decades. But that's not what we decided to do. What we decided to do is apparently, based on the one kind of blurry slide that was shown, because there was nothing really included in any of the backup material. And, and I know y'all met in your secret executive sessions to discuss this. And I use the word secret because those are not required by law to be executive sessions. Y'all could have had those discussions in front of, in front of all of us and discussed about that. I did apply, submit a request for information to the city staff to get a list of what kind of communications there was between our $450,000 planning consultants and what's going to get built out there. I suspect that's going to come back with nothing. But maybe I'm wrong. Maybe there was all sorts of communication there. And, and the people that are experts in that, you know, really figured out a good way for us to spend our money to, to build a great future part of Nacogdoches. I know we love to talk about our old historic areas, but when the historic areas were built, they weren't historic areas. They were just areas of town. So now what are we doing? We're just building, and we're just building a cookie cutter subdivision. They showed a picture of a nice, beautiful house, two-car garage. But what they didn't show is it's all the houses that are around it. They showed it on one lot with nothing around it. There was no context, there was no understanding. There's no urban design, no streetscape, no, none of the other things that the planning consultants would talk about. So what I would request is that, and maybe Ms. Bellinger, you could lead this, because you did a great job on, on leading the one that was at the end of your neighborhood, is you could kind of go over with how we're going to, or Mayor, anybody, you know, have, have y'all come up and give a presentation and tell us how we're going to not just ignore our city plan that we haven't even done and what will probably be the largest subdivision in our lifetimes. And I think it was stated in the meeting that it's, there hadn't been one in 20 years. So the one chance we have to do, to do good city planning, we completely ignore it. So I hope y'all will bring us into the, bring the community up into what's going on and talk about that, because it does have to come for a zoning hearing. And that's when the urban design gets to be considered. At this point, it's just giving them money, which, you know, I'm not opposed if the design is right. But, you know, for just another subdivision, it's like, no, I don't think so, from my perspective. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. We appreciate you. All right. No other comments, I don't think, from the public. So we will move on to number four, items to be removed from the consent agenda. And that's in number five. Are there any council persons, members? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved, Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden, thank you. Any discussion? All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. We will move to number six, regular agenda. City Council receives staff recommendations and public input on the following items and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. A, receive a presentation from the Texas Police Chiefs Association by Chief Todd Hunter, Kilgore Police Department, regarding the successful completion of the TPCA accreditation program by the Nacogdoches Police Department. Chief Todd Hunter.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and members of the Nacogdoches community. My name is Todd Hunter. I'm the police chief for the city of Kilgore and past president of the Texas Police Chiefs Association. I am honored to be here this evening to present the Texas Police Chiefs Association Accreditation Program Certificate for your re-recognized. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of over 100, 1,500 professional police chiefs throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of the quality of police services. I am here this evening to present the Nacogdoches Police Department with a certificate of re-accreditation for continuing to maintain their compliance with the Texas law enforcement best practices for law enforcement for the past four years. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you know about accreditation programs for schools, universities, hospitals. They are all programs of professional excellence and all require proof of compliance with a set of professional standards. Ours is similar. It is a voluntary program where agencies must prove that they meet or exceed 170 difficult standards. Just so you know that in Texas, police departments are not, they're not audited or maintained by the city or by Austin, which is good. It comes down to the local rule. But we don't have anything that guides us as police chiefs. This program is there in sets of standard. The standards are based on Texas law, Texas court decisions, and contemporary best practices as identified by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations, such as use of force, protection of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, property and evidence management, and patrol and investigation operations, just to name a few. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. Approximately 12 years ago, the Nacogdoches Police Department first attained their accredited, accredited status with the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and it was not easy to do. The agency had to conduct a complete audit of all of its policies, procedures, and operations in order to meet these standards. Since that time, the agency has submitted annual reports that were reviewed to ensure that they continued to meet the standards and continue to provide the citizens of Nacogdoches with effective police service. In January of this year, trained assessors, police chiefs, and command officers from other parts of our state spent two days conducting another assessment of the Nacogdoches Police Department. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, met with field officers, and ensured compliance with all standards. Their report was then sent to the accreditation committee, comprised of nine active police chiefs from around the state, who reviewed the report and voted to award accredited status once again to your agency. The vote was unanimous. During the process, the Nacogdoches Police Department has once again proven that it meets or exceeds the best practices for law enforcement in Texas. Of the 2,700 law enforcement agencies in Texas, only 185 are recognized or have achieved this status. This evening, we will officially recognize the Nacogdoches Police Department for their outstanding performance. What does this mean for the community, those that are here? The accreditation program assures both city management and the citizens of Nacogdoches that their police department is operating in a manner that reflects the current best practices of law enforcement in the state of Texas. It means your police department is continually striving for professional excellence. It means your department is one of the very best in the state of the tech, in the state of Texas. Like I had said, only 185 have this status. Their certificate we present this evening is symbolic. While it is clearly the mark of professional excellence, the real value of, of the program is the process that they must complete to receive this certificate. And once again, it is not the end of the process. The department will continue to submit annual reports to assure that the continued compliance is ongoing. And in four years, we'll be back for another onsite inspection to ensure that the agency is continuing to comply with all standards. The Nacogdoches Police Department is a leader in law enforcement in Texas. You should be very proud of their accomplishment. Chief, would you come forward? This is their certificate, your certificate, which will hang in the police department, as it says in the bottom, since 2010, one of the very first agencies in the state of Texas to get recognized. I believe it was in the top 10. Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation, to all that see this certificate, know that the Nacogdoches Police Department, having fulfilled the necessary qualifications and mandatory requirements of the Texas Police Chiefs Association, Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Recognition Program, is now, we're an accredited program, by voluntary, voluntarily proving their compliance with the Texas law enforcement best practices, the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation Board of Directors does hereby award this certificate of recognition effective the 31st of January 2022 through 2026 to the Nacogdoches Police Department. Sure. And Mayor, as I had said, this is, just shortly after they earned this, we were able to move to an accreditation program. So that will actually be turned into an accreditation and not just recognition. So we're continuing moving up. And I'm proud to say that over 15 states are following our lead with this program, right?
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just a few things, Mayor and council, that I'd like to add to this is that we can't do this without support of the community, without support of city administration, without some support of, of our mayor and council. It, it just wouldn't be possible. But this, this is the natural next step towards exceptional customer service and delivery of professional services in law enforcement in Texas. And like Chief Hunter said, it is being adopted by many, many other states. And it, it is, is, is TML actually is, is pushing the recognition program through the Texas Municipal League. They feel that strongly about it. And we are very pleased to, to be a part of the program. We are pleased with the leadership shown by the Texas Police Chiefs Association, because this is a very, very in-depth program with a, there are a lot of compliance checks. And, and I'm very pleased that we're able to offer this product to the city of Nacogdoches. And thank you very much for your support.
Right, thank you. Any, any comment from the, from the public? Anybody have anything to say? Okay, council? Ms. Anderson?
No, I, thank you very much, Chief, for presenting this. And thank you, Chief, for always, I think, working to make our police department better than it has been, which is pretty good, so.
Chief, you said it was 180, only 185 out of how many?
2,700 police agencies in the state of Texas.
So I don't even want to try to calculate that percentage.
It's not a very good percentage.
It's not, yeah. How, um, why? Why do you think it's, it is that way?
As your chief just said, it is difficult.
Okay.
He is an assessor, he's also a team leader, as I am. He goes to other agencies, he sees those. I think we do that just so that we, we stay knowledgeable about the program and we can bring back things to our own city. I always find that, that I learn something when I'm, I'm out and about. But a lot of chiefs, in fact, I was talking with the lieutenant of a nearby police department. He said his chief just doesn't want to get involved. There's, it's just too much for them. It's a living program. It's not something that they do and fulfill in one year and they close the door on it for four. I'm working on this weekly to maintain it and make sure that we're, we're maintaining those standards. A lot of times, the line officers may not see and realize it. A lot of the policies that we do are there, but they don't understand. But it does bring less accountability or more accountability to the city and hopefully less of a liability to the city, is what I was going to say. And as Chief Seavey said, we're hoping that eventually TML will look at this and actually give those cities that are TML cities that are recognized, a break. And I think you would like a break in our insurance. But I think it's a, it's a difficult program for some. We'll certainly reach out and help others. We've done that in East Texas. We've helped about four other agencies come online. But I think it's just the, the difficulty, it's not very expensive. So it's not the cause. I think it's, it's the policies and procedures that have to be put into place early on. And it just, some people shy away from it, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Super impressive.
Thank you. Ms. Bellinger?
Chief, I want to thank you for mentioning that, that to the council and the staff was part of the process. But it's your leadership that's put you in position and the sitting position to receive this achievement. Not only the police officers, but the staff that you are the leadership over. And we really appreciate it and thank you for all that you do.
So I think I did calculate it. It's around 6% of the, 6-point something, right? 6.97%, thank you so much.
You two would.
I already did it before because I was curious, but.
It's so annoying.
Anyway, but what really impresses me is that it's voluntary and that you all, all of you, the whole police department and you, Chief Seavey, undertook this as a voluntary measure to really improve, well, and to, to meet a standard. And that's really what this is, is a standard, an objective standard to meet. And I know several people here, including Dr. Lisa Mize and I, know exactly, know how hard it is to do accreditation work. She's nodding back there. It's, it's, it's tough. And to meet outside standards and to choose to do it when it's voluntary, I mean, you just have my admiration, all of you, the whole police department, the whole police force. And thank you for coming down to do that.
And I think it, it leads a lot of credence to the program in the fact that they don't just say that we meet these standards. We actually send in the team that go through all of the policies and procedures. And of course, we look at the, the annual reports as well. And I see all of those reports, because I'm one of those nine chiefs that's on the committee. And not a lot of cities that are re-recognized go through as well as they did. A lot of times, they just lose touch with the program and they kind of let it go. And we have some issues there. But it is the gold standard. I appreciate y'all having us here this evening and recognizing that. Because few police departments in the state of Texas, as we now know, 6.9%.
Thank you, thank you.
Certainly, I echo those comments, Chief. Thank you for your work and for your force. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just had one question. What do we need to do to get our insurance lowered in order to get this program?
We're continually working on that.
And if you need the whole city of Nacogdoches to write something.
Your city manager will continue to talk with them. And I think at, at some point, because they have funded the first year for most agencies to come on, they see the value of it, as Chief said. And I think eventually, we'll see a reduction in those rates for those cities that are recognized and accredited now.
Mayor Mize, I'm sorry. Hold on, you go.
Oh, good. Thank you for your work, officer. We appreciate you. Thank you.
They want pictures.
Yeah, if y'all stand together and let Dan take a photo. He was trying really hard. Well, I'm trying, Dan.
We will move on to B, under regular agenda, consider approval of a contract buy-in between the city of Nacogdoches and Stoltz Mechanical Contractors LLC for the 2021 SWTP Filter VII Rehabilitation Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $885,732, project engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sam Kramer, the project engineer for the city of Nacogdoches. I'm asking you to consider approval for the contract between the city of Nacogdoches and Stoltz Mechanical Contractors for the 2021 Surface Water Treatment Plant Filter VII Rehabilitation Project. So on March 17th, 2022, we received bids from four different contractors for this project. You can see each of those contractors, along with their base bids, on the screen. The base bids for this project include mainly the rehabilitation of Filter VII, which has been out of service for quite some time now, awaiting repairs. The rehabilitation is going to include replacement of the filter media and under drains, along with disinfection and testing before we put it back online. Also in the base bids are various items, like replacing the butterfly valves and actuators, along with ultrasonic level transmitters and filter affluent turbidimeters. And there's also two additive alternates for this project. The first one is to recote all the piping in the pipe galleries for filters one through four. And the second one is to do the same for filters five through 10. So just recoding all the piping. So Stoltz Mechanical Contractors was the low bidder for the base bid and two adults. They had a base bid of $785,732 and a adult, number one, in $35,000. And number two came in at $65,000. We have not contracted with them before on previous projects, but our engineering consultant, KSA, has reviewed their references and qualifications. And they're recommended and we see them as qualified to complete the job successfully. So we do recommend that the, the low bid and both added, add alternates get awarded to Stoltz Mechanical Contractors in total amount of $885,732. And I'll be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Right. Any comment from the public? Okay. Counsel, Ms. Bellinger? Any questions or thoughts?
None. Looks good.
Let me ask a question about the contractors, Stoltz Mechanical. Is that, there's quite a gap between the low and the high bid. And you answered one of the questions that I was going to ask if they had done work previously for Nacogdoches. But have they done this type of work anywhere else that you got a recommendation from or against?
So, yeah, with, they do submit, they, they do submit previous work on similar projects when we, when we get their bids. If you look up Stoltz Mechanical, they have a website. And the first thing you see on there is that they do municipal water projects. And, and again, we did check the references with KSA. As for the price differences, again, it's a accumulation of all the different bid items that sets their price lower. The one thing that we did notice, what was a lot lower, is that their replacement of the butterfly valves, the 12-inch butterfly valves, was the lowest. And that could just be a supply thing. They might have a better supply price, so.
Thank you.
You know, I, I know ours, this has been down for a while. So how have we made it without it? And what does this do for us as far as getting it back online?
So we have 10 total filters at the water treatment plant. So one filter going down is not the end of the world necessarily. But getting it back online will allow for us, you know, if another filter goes down or if we have to do maintenance on another filter, we just have that added backup.
Improve the quality of our water?
Absolutely, yes. The filter media, you know, it removes contaminants from the water. So over time, that age, and that's really the main reason that we have to do rehabilitation on it, is to just improve the quality of the filter. So yes, it will improve.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
What's the anticipated lifespan of this particular rehab?
I can tell you, we haven't, the last time.
I know, it's hard to, to put an exact time.
It hasn't been rehabbed in, in decades, so. It, it lasts quite a while. I don't have an exact, I don't have an exact date for you, unfortunately. But I can get you a date, though, if you'd like.
Oh, no, I, I'm just curious as to generally, yeah, how, how long we can expect this, this rehab to last.
And our filters are maintained on a regular basis and clean, backwashed to, to make their lifespan as long as possible, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else to have a motion on B?
I move to accept this contract, is it?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Anderson? Any more comment? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to C. Consider a resolution regarding the application of CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, Beaumont, East Texas Division, to increase rates under the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, suspending CenterPoint's proposed effective date for 45 days and authorizing the city's continued participation in a coalition of cities known as the Alliance of CenterPoint Municipalities. City Attorney?
Mayor, Council, I'm City Attorney. CenterPoint has filed for a rate increase. They get to do that. Often times, they get to do that more times than we count. But each time in between full rate cases, there is a process where they can seek to recoup certain infrastructure costs that they've expended over the year. And that triggers a rate hike for our residents. We do not have the ability for this particular type of filing to actually seek to go into the whys, they spent the money. But we do have the ability to make sure they've added all the numbers right. And in order to do that, we have to have someone willing to do that for us. Albert, Alfred Herrera and Law Associates has been our lawyer on rate cases in the past. And they are willing to do the review of the documentation, this time pro bono for prior clients. They need, of course, the authorization for us to hire them to do that. And that's part of your resolution tonight, is to hire them to check the numbers for us. The second piece of this is, while they're doing that, it delays the hike for our residents. You know, it gives us 45 days to actually review the numbers and slow up the rate hike. For most of our residents, it'll be about a 3% rate hike. Could go up to around 5% for some of the higher volume users. So that's what this is about, is to hire them, delay the rate increase for the 45 days so we can do a numbers check until we get to a full rate hearing process, which is probably two or three years down the line.
Any public comment? All right, counsel, any comments? Ms. Anderson, we'll start with you. Any, anything? Ms. Fisher?
You mentioned the full rate hearing, whatever it was that you mentioned at the very end. My, my question wasn't as probably related to that is, after the review of this, if we, if, if the attorney that we've hired says, well, no, this isn't legit because of X, Y, and Z, I mean, what, what recourse do we have?
So the challenge would, the challenge to the numbers would go to the P, I believe it's actually the Railroad Commission. And that's a pretty straightforward challenge. It's just, here are the numbers, they don't add up. They added, or they added a type of number that doesn't belong in this. And that would allow the commission to then change their adjustment request. So it's not a full-blown hearing, but we have the opportunity to point out errors. So it's not a full-blown hearing, but we have the opportunity to point out errors.
Is that the only thing that we have the opportunity to do?
For this stage of the process, yes.
Okay.
So when we get to a full rate hearing, then we can actually question were the expenditures necessary for providing the service, and that's a different inquiry, and it's a different level of challenge and a different level of involvement.
But this is the, like, the first hurdle that needs to be jumped, or is it unrelated?
It's an interim hurdle.
Okay.
They're at the fifth or sixth one of these, at which point, when they trip over the next one, it will trigger a full rate hearing.
Okay, okay.
So they get so many, we spent this money, we need to recoup it before you get into a full rate hearing, then we look at the whole structure, which is, are you spending money wisely and investing in the system in a way that makes sense?
Okay. Is there any way to, for the city to tie any sort of, I mean, it's not performance, but like, they've come and done improvements on streets and left cement blocks in people's lawns and didn't clean them up until I raised heck about it, and even then, they came and only cleaned up some of them, and there's still a huge cement block in some of my neighbor's houses. The walkways are torn apart and people can't walk down them. My question, I mean, because they have a monopoly, it seems, right? So my question is, what recourse do we have other than complaining about it to them when they perform in this way? Yeah, when they perform poorly, and then on top of that, we have to say, all right, well, I guess we'll just eat the rate hike.
Our tools are limited. Each of those are in a different provision of our arrangement with them. For example, the right-of-way, I don't believe we can get permits from them now, and I know we're not getting permits from them, but we can adopt a right-of-way ordinance that lays out the types of things that can do in that area. We don't currently have one. We are a low-regulation city, and that's been by design, history, and plan. And so customer service and customer complaints is the way we would go to generate a response.
Okay.
We can, if we have a whole bunch of them, then, of course, we can climb up the corporate ladder and start making more noise. The leverage point comes when you go to a full rate hearing.
Okay.
One sidewalk is not really enough to get their attention or a big bargaining point, but when you get enough stuff on the table, then you can start addressing a lot of bigger issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Well done.
The resolution is not in regards to the amount of the increase requested, right? It's just to be able to go in and get more information as to why they want a rate increase?
Largely is to go in and check their math.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Bellinger.
I have three questions. So how often do the challenges result in some kind of different rate or in finding math errors? Is it common, or is it?
These challenges, I don't know. I suspect it's not, not very often, I mean, because math is math, and CenterPoint hires good accountants, so I hope their math is correct.
So mostly, it probably is the delay thing that we expect to hear.
It delays the impact on your residents, yes.
Okay, and are we going to bear the whole cost of hiring the attorney, or does the coalition, I mean, this seems like the coalition might, everybody in the coalition might get this 45-day thing, or?
Mr. Herrera has solicited all members of the coalition, solicit is not the right term, he's reached out to all members of the coalition to say, do you want to do this? And I suspect others are doing that, but he's also told them that he's not going to charge for this service. It's in recognition that we have been clients of his in the past, and of course, he hopes that we will be clients of his in the future.
Okay, so it's not a, we're not paying?
We're not paying. This is no money to us today.
And as one of the people who has seen the really shoddy work, and I mean, the utility work may be great, but the sidewalks and the wrecks left, how much of a, how much of an outcry do we have to have so that they don't tear up things in, you know, in neighborhoods? It really was bad, and we had several calls, and the city had calls of, you know, things being shut down and not being shut down right, and, you know, as a result of this work.
So to get CenterPoint's attention in Houston, which is, of course, a big player and a big market for them, we had to have several millions, to the tune of tens of millions of dollars at stake in a variety of different projects and problems in order to get them to address holistically a lot of the issues that we had going on. So I don't know that we will get to the same level, but we can certainly try.
Well, I'm following up on Ms. Fisher's great points that I thought she made, and if they're, just in the future, if you could advise us, because there really was a lot of damage and a lot of, and there's still damage out there.
So customer service is something that can be raised in the full rate hearing?
Okay, and if we need to do things, like get letters, prior to that, just keep us informed.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
So will we see this again before the rate hikes take effect? Or will this thing just happen and pass, and then they'll go into effect until this rate hearing that's two years down the road?
So your resolution today stops the rate hearing, the rate from going into effect the start of May, and it just delays it for 45 days, in which case, and it happens without any further action on your part. And you don't get another chance to vote on it, no.
And so the rate hearing will just happen automatically? This, this next one that you're talking about?
So the grip filing is not a rate hearing, it's a rate adjustment, doesn't trigger the full rate hearing process. Our resolution merely defers the impact of the rate of the grip filing, to get more precisely technical with you, because you were getting more precisely technical with me.
So tell me again when the, when the right hearing would be triggered?
The rate hearing under the current filing would be May 2nd, I believe.
No, you'd said something about down the road, where we could talk about these damages and things.
The full rate hearing, that would be the next time they would trigger the rate hearing, we would not.
When they ask for another increase?
Right.
Okay. Do you have a motion for C?
So move.
Okay. A second, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to D, Consider Adopting a Fee Waiver Policy to Leverage the Efforts of Nonprofit Agencies in Improving the Lives of the Citizens of Nacogdoches in a Fiscally Responsible Manner. City Attorney.
Again, this is your city attorney. You all had asked, one of our prior meetings, for us to come up with a policy for fee waivers, and so we have done that. And the waiver policy that I presented to you is the one that we would recommend you adopt. The theoretical underpinnings of this is pretty straightforward. We cannot collect a fee for a permit or some service without having it tied to cost, so we can't just give away those, or waive those fees without having a public purpose. Otherwise, we violate the Texas Constitution of Giving a Gift of Public Resources to Private Individuals. So we have to find a public purpose in each one of the fee waivers that you do, and that's why we've talked about various things, as we've come along with the ones we've had. And this is to formalize this process. So, and the application would be designed to establish what the public purpose is for each of the fee requests that we get. And things that would be recognized as a public purpose would be providing a service to the public that we now don't have to provide. So that's the easiest way, and the way, easiest way to distill the public purpose that gets found. Now, it gets found in a lot of different ways, and we are talking, and I've asked for a policy to describe a, an application that requires the people who are asking it to describe what the public purpose is, so that it's not just us trying to figure it out. We have a whole city of smart people who can describe public purposes for us, so we can give them the opportunity to do that. The other piece of this is to create budgets in the departments that collect the fees so that we can keep track of how much we're actually spending, or waiving, or giving away. Even though you can look at it as just revenue that we're not getting, there's actually a cost associated with every one of these things. So every permit has a cost associated with it, and it's tied to the people that are running the program, managing the program, the paperwork, the files, the inspections, and whatnot. And if we charge a fee that doesn't, isn't tied to that, then we're charging, causing a tax, and that's a whole different problem. So the idea behind all of this is to get it all more regularized so that we can keep track of it, without necessarily not continuing to support the agencies that we've supported over time. So that's what I've laid out for you. The waiver would go to the city manager, who could then designate it, and probably will designate it out, to the department directors for their specific programs, but we'll be generating a tracking system to know who's asking for what, and how much it's gonna, how much is being impacted. It is possible that in some fee or regulatory programs, that one fee waiver is of a de minimis amount, but until we know what, what the quantity is, we can't say that.
Right. Thank you. Any public comment? Okay, counsel, come in. Ms. Bellinger?
I think it's really helpful to have fee waivers and to not consider them, this is, not considering them piece by piece each time, correct? This gets us out of the council having to.
We would, we would not have to bring one to you every time somebody came. We would have a policy that you've told us how to guide it, how to do it, and we will do that. The fact that we have a policy that tells us how to do that doesn't mean we won't, we will never bring you one. We may have one that we think is worthy that doesn't somehow fit squarely within this, and we want to bring it to you, or we may have one that we think you ought to be aware of because it's such a really wonderful something.
Okay, do you envision any problems with discretion, you know, like yes to this one and no to that one, or, that's just, I'm curious about it.
So discretion is always something you have to be careful with, and that's why we have the factors laid out here, is to guide how that discretion gets used. I don't anticipate any problems with that. By and large, the fees that get waived are the fees that we brought to you in the past from agencies that are doing things that you've supported in the past.
So thanks for following up on all this. That's it.
Ms. Bellinger?
Yes. Fees, in my opinion, of services that's provided and that is needed. Now, the entity, if we don't provide that service with those fees, is the entity that requesting, no fees charged, are they going to have to provide that type of service themselves?
So the fees that we're talking about here are fees that we would charge the agency to give them a permit to do something, or to bring out a dumpster, this would be one of those, or to turn on the water at a location. So like Mission NAC does, does work, and they ask for dumpsters.
Right.
So, and this is a way for us to support that effort. That effort is providing affordable housing, which is something we need, and it's a good program, and it has a public purpose. And then picking up the trash, of course, is something that we do, so the fee would be tied to the cost of bringing the dumpster out there, so this would be a contribution of public funds to that effort.
I mean, it's not like funds that we're going to put in the bank. I mean, it's actually, you're paying an employee to perform a task.
That one is really clear that you're doing that. There are some fees, it's some, it's a little more difficult to quantify, so like if they came in for a building permit, and we have employees performing tasks, but that employee is likely going to be here anyway, so it's hard to quantify how much of that employee's time is devoted to that particular agency's request.
Now, that statement, I understand.
So that's one of the reasons why we need to be a little more rigorous in how we approach this, so we can start quantifying that. If that employee gets taken away from someone who's paying a fee to do a permit for someone who's not paying a fee, then the person who's paying the fee is actually making the contribution, not us. Does that make, you follow me there?
Thank you, I got it.
So this is to make sure that we collectively are paying that fair share to support that project, not the other people who are doing it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a really great endeavor, and Ms. Bellinger, there's another, it's Mission NAC and Lufkin Strong, is it?
Neighborhood Strong.
Neighborhood Strong, yeah.
Neighborhood Strong hasn't, hasn't asked for anything yet, but they're, Loving could very easily ask.
Loving has asked for, for fee waivers before Mission.
And I could see, I mean, there are a lot of different groups. Rotary might ask for a fee waiver, or some of the, you know, high school groups, I don't know if they're following under the.
SFA has that program also.
SFA has the, so I, but SFA is a whole different entity, so I'll leave it to you all to kind of figure out.
There are a lot of agencies that come to us for differing purposes. I pulled out the ones that people have pointed out to me.
Red Cross, I mean, they could easily, you know, be in there.
Individual citizens, I just paid a fee.
Are you a 501(c)(3)? I can imagine, right?
Ms. Fisher?
I don't have any questions.
I just wanted to say that I'm absolutely in favor of helping these organizations do what they do to help the community, because it is, I think, important for us to support these nonprofits, to do things that the city is not necessarily capable of doing themselves, but that are important for the community, so I like it.
And super comprehensive, sorry. I just wanted to make a comment that the policy, I feel like, is really comprehensive, and all of the important factors that should be there are there, so thank you for that, too.
Right, thank you. Do you have a motion on D?
So move.
Motion, oh, go ahead.
I will move to approve D as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, we'll go to E, Receive a Report, Hold a Discussion, and Give Staff Direction on an Ordinance or Policy to Provide Local Preferences in Procurement. City Attorney.
You all have talked numerous times in the past when we've had bids brought to you or acquisitions we're trying to make, that could we get it here, could we get it locally? And the answer is sometimes yes, sometimes no, but the process wasn't enabled to allow to do a local sourcing within the confines of the law. Law does allow local preferences for acquisition of services and goods within a pretty narrow band. Normally, we're required to go to the lowest responsible bidder. The law has a provision in it for a local preference, for 3% for goods if you're purchasing, and 5% for services and goods below $500,000, and then it's a much more restricted band of, band for construction services. So you have the ability to do that in state law. We have not had it triggered or set up so that we could do that effectively here. So we can do, we can trigger that and take advantage of the state law any number of ways. You do not have to have an ordinance to do that. As far as I can tell, the two big cities that have ordinances, two big cities have ordinances and three of the big cities don't. So you can do it via ordinance, you can do it by policy, or you can simply do it by practice. And one of the ways you do it by practice is, all of our bids and requests for bids and requests for proposals start with a basic form that resides on a cloud that today now have language. Start with a basic form that resides on a cloud that today now have language says, we may choose a local option. So by practice now, every bid going forward is going to have the language in the bid allowing you to choose a local option if they come in within the right parameters. And that's just simply a matter of practice because you all have asked the question enough times that we're now putting it in the base form. We can also have it done by policy so that we allow the world to know more about what we're doing. And we can publish it in some way. And it's an official statement by you all to us and to the community that we want to give a preference to our local vendors. Who can provide the stuff that we need. The other way to do it is through the ordinance and I've drafted a form of ordinance for you. That is based on the San Antonio and Houston ordinances. So it's pretty straightforward. And so that is a third way we can get there. And I don't know which way you want to go. There are pros and cons. The practice, as I said, I've already dropped it in there. And it allows you on a case by case basis, each time you make an acquisition to decide if you want to do the local one. You're going to have to do that with any acquisition you, you, you make anyway. Decide you want the local choice over the low bidder if the local choice is not the low bidder. The policy is probably more nimbly deployed and more nimbly changed. So if state law changes or there's a new decision come out from a court somewhere, we can implement it very quickly just by changing the policy. And so it's a more flexible and supple and I guess elastic way of accomplishing the goal. The more formal way is through the ordinance. The ordinance has the benefit of being more transparent to the public because it's in the code of ordinances. And it's in a place where everybody can see it and find it. It is, of course, one where there's a process we have to go through to change the ordinance if we want to do that. We are a small enough organization that that's not a real laborious process, but it's still a process. So the question is, which of these ways do you want to go? And you know, I, you don't have to tell me tonight, but that is one of the questions that I, I need to get some direction from you on. And if you're ready to tell me tonight, great, because that means I get to work on doing what it is you need me to do. When you get into the nuts and bolts of the, into the weeds. And there's a couple of weedy points we need to, we need to talk about. The law requires us and is tied to the city limits. So the business that we give a preference to is a business that's located in the city limits. They have to have a principal office within the city limits. So a business that has a mailbox in the city limits. And then their office is outside our taxing, tax, outside the city limits, like some of the places on the West Loop. I think it's West Loop, would not be able to get the benefit under the statute. And that's in the statute. I can't play with that. Y'all can't play with that. You have to live with it. And we could debate policy as to why it's good, bad, or indifferent, but that's really just, you know, conversation for beers or something.
Tea.
Well, for me, it's iced tea. You all can have beer. But what constitutes an office is a principal office is something we can talk about. There is no definition in the statute for what constitutes a principal office. So we have to come up with our own version of that. There are some things that are pretty simple. One is, you know, they have their corporate headquarters within the, within the city limits. There are not many of those here, so that would be a small preference pool. But that is something that stands out as an easily defensible and fit squarely within the statute. Houston ordinance is based on 20% of the company's employees work out of an office within the city of Houston. And that's a good threshold and another way to put a threshold. And I think San Antonio has that as one of their thresholds as a possibility. So a percentage of the employee base. Again, that's going to be a pretty small pool of businesses that could qualify for that here. Either they're local companies with all of their employees here or they're generally not, with the exception of maybe Elliott. Not going to have branches with a lot of employees around. I think there's a construction firm or two that has offices in Lufkin, their headquarters there. And they have a sizable chunk of folks here, but it's probably not 20%. Another threshold we can throw out is number of employees that actually work in the city. San Antonio uses 100. Houston doesn't use any of that. The ordinance that I drafted has a number of five. And that's a number that Pam and I batted around and decided it was a good number. Our thought processes on that were the employment base, the employment size of companies that do business here in the city is not huge. This allows for a substantial office, not just a, a non, non-functioning office. And it is a big enough number of employees that the likelihood is that maybe one or two of them live in the city. But they're all going to spend money in the city. So the economic benefit component plays out for us there. How you want to define that is something I would need direction from you all. I think those are the two. Mr. Bartlett, was there anything else that I thought I needed direction from these folks from?
Ms. Van.
Yeah. Oh. That's a different, the next conversation. The other way you can give a local preference is through bidding your projects or bidding your acquisitions. On something called the best value bidding process. And the best value bidding process doesn't turn off of price, although price is always a component of value. You have to build up a scoring system. And your scoring system has more points for someone located in the city. And no points for someone who's not located in the city or not local at all. And best value, you can actually have an intermediate level of a local area business. That's not necessarily in the city limits, but recognizes that local area businesses, say someone in the county. Is still going to provide an economic benefit to us in the city if we give them that contract over someone from, say, Dallas. So we don't use best value a lot, I am told. And we don't have a matrix ready to go. So if you chose the ordinance, you're directing us to create a matrix that gives a preference. If you do a policy, it'll have some of the same things and we would again create a matrix that gives a preference. And where best value makes sense for us, we can use, roll that out. Now, there are purchases we make that don't require a bid and those are under 50,000. Those purchases, we do require quotes. To get three quotes so that we're, you know, getting reasonable prices. We also have an obligation between three and 50 to reach out and get quotes from historically underutilized businesses. So at least three means we get our two plus one. So we generally get three. So the ordinance, if you choose to go that route, allows us to give a preference to a local under that bidding. Or directs us to give a preference to a local under that bidding process or that quoting process. So that's the, the gist of where we are in terms of what we can do. The gist of the ordinance that I've laid out in front of you. And now I'm ready to take questions or cede the floor to my colleagues back here. Who have longer memories and history of working in actual bidding process here in the city. One of the comments that I've had and I've heard from these guys is that there are some bids that our local bidders just won't bid on. Because the requirements to do business with the city are high. And the other one is while there may be suppliers who can get the stuff we need, they can't get it on the timeline that we need. So we need to have more information going back and forth between us and the local vendors. As to what the likely needs are, what the supply chain looks like. So that all of that can be better coordinated and better informed by each other's processes. The types of requirements that create problems for local vendors are we've, as across the board, required workers' compensation. For any contractor doing business with us. We've required performance bonds for all levels of construction and construction bonds. And we have also required. I'm missing something else. The bonding piece is a big one for the constructions. And prevailing wages is going to be another one for constructions. So.
Would, I mean, I assume any city would require that? Any municipality?
They're all going to be based on, and the reason ours, they're all going to be based on state law. And if it's a public infrastructure, the prevailing wages, the workers' comp, those are things that we cannot deal away with. So those are things that have to be there. But like the exterminator that treats city hall. Doesn't have to meet all of those under state law. They only have to meet what we give them. And our requirements have been that they meet the full, full, full freight. Part of the reason historically for that is we had a decentralized purchasing system. So the form, the base, base needs had to be laid out so we didn't have someone talking about each and every one of them. So that when the police department needed something, they would go out and acquire it and then pull the base, the basic form out that had the standards. We have started the process where everybody that's doing an acquisition comes to me and now Drew. For reviewing the process for getting that so that we're giving them more help on the front end. Which allows us to be a little more tailored. So like we don't have to have workers' comp on everything per statute. And it's a question of how much risk do we wish, want to take. Some of these are pretty low risk. My advice to the department on a few of these have been, we don't need workers' comp for that. And again, that's something that can be done by practice or we can spend more time putting it into policy or into an ordinance. But those are barriers that our local vendors sometimes recite back to us.
I'd ask for any, any comments from the public or even from staff about something, your thoughts? Sure.
Hi, I'm Brandy Cartwright. And I think it's a good idea to support local vendors. So I'm really glad you guys have looked into this. I know it's really complicated and I do not envy you guys having to figure this out. But I just wanted to say that there is support for that.
Great, thank you. You, you know, it's, it's hard, I think, for us to make the decision as to how far we go out. We all want the same. We all want to support our local people. But you're, you, Steve, y'all are the guys that, that, and, and ladies that, that interact with these businesses. And they're, they tell you, oh, that's too strenuous for me, you know, to, to bid. So I mean, you got to give us some, I think you got to give us some guidance and whether it's a policy or an ordinance. I, I mean, I don't know if, 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 if there's a preference.
We, I, I know I have some thoughts, you have thoughts.
I have some thoughts too. You can go, go ahead.
I'll let you go first, I know.
Okay, okay.
Brilliant thing.
I, I think the barriers to bidding, I mean, I, I think that, like you said, the, you can probably look at something and say, well, this maybe doesn't require workers' comp or performance bond. But I think, I mean, there should be a minimum standard of like prevailing wages. I mean, we have to have, I think, something, and if that's a, if a barrier to bidding is prevailing wage for workers, sorry.
So the prevailing wages I'm talking about are not necessarily fair wages. It's the process that's described in the federal procurement manual determining and paying people according to whatever classification. With respect to the construction industry, the ones where it's most likely to come into play. My thought is that we don't have to worry about it because if they're aren't paying prevailing wages, they don't have workers. Because they're all going to where, they're going to the highest dollar because the market's pretty tight right now.
Right. Yeah, I'm.
But the compliance piece of that may be a different problem. And it'd be, and as far as that goes, I mean, I, I, I know we all agree that people who do a day's work need to be paid a day's wage. And that needs to be a fair amount for their work.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the prevailing wage, the federal prevailing wage because of my work. And, you know, it's, it's based on not just the job and the job duties, but the area. And so, I mean, it's a pretty, you know, deep and also like local analysis of what the job is and the market, et cetera. And, and, and even though it's, might be more than maybe the minimum, minimum wage, right? I still think that it's a legitimate thing for us to have, even if it creates a barrier. That's my opinion on that. Regarding the ordinance versus the policy, my inclination, not super, super strong preference. But I feel like if we're going to commit to something like this, that it should probably be an ordinance. And I can't remember what else you wanted direction on.
Principal place of business.
Versus number of employees, or like which one we want to.
How, how, how do you want that defined?
I, I am willing to take other, to, to listen to other people's opinions on that because I don't feel super strongly and, and trust your judgment. And Pam's judgment on it, honestly.
On behalf of Pam and me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bellinger.
So I, I guess my question is for my fellow council members. Is I, I tend to lean toward when we're trying something new. I tend to like to start with a policy that is pretty, you know, it's pretty strict. Like every, people living in the city, doing their business in the city, not living, but doing, having the business in the city. And trying out the policy first and making sure that, you know, we're, we're, you know, getting all the kinks worked out. Because this, this procedure is really going to add a burden to our staff. You know, because you're going to be needing to work and communicate locally. But it'll be a, a good thing, I think. I mean, and I know that's why you all put some time into it. So I'm thinking, would, would we want to start with a policy first? And, and try and work it out and then move toward an ordinance that actually, you know, is, is a lot stiffer. And that, that's what I would tend to, to think. I don't.
I think it makes some sense, yeah.
And then, and then you, then you can figure out, you know, once you, once you publicize it and say, this is our policy now. We really do want to buy locally. And we really want to have, you know, our local businesses compete. And we want to give you a little edge because the money comes here and that's why we have this policy. And, and lower requirements where appropriate and not lower them when they're not appropriate. Because you sure wouldn't want the exterminator to not use, you know, to, well, to not take safety precautions or did he? I mean, and that's, you all can figure that out and, you know. But anyway, I think we could work the kinks out. The thing about the prevailing wage, I don't know if we require that of anybody now currently. Do we require that of contractors?
All of our construction contracts.
Require that? Okay. And so some of the contracts, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, I'm old enough that I remember, not the name, but the, the business. Business products that was right down the street. What was that?
Story right, right here.
Yeah, story, even before that, it was.
John S. Wyatt.
Yeah, Wyatt. John S. Wyatt. John S. Wyatt. The city went somewhere else and paid the exact same amount of money for paper products. From someplace out of Houston or Dallas or something instead of buying it from John S. Wyatt. And, I mean, I remember that when I first came here and thought, why are we doing that, you know? So paper products is, is a, is an example that we could do. We could buy locally, we could buy copying, we could buy. So all those, I think, are, are, to have a simplified policy to get the communication out. I really appreciate how you all addressed communications in here, that that's a significant barrier. Let's get the word out. Let's try and get information in and then see the kinks. I mean, I'm, how soon can we start? So it's really my question.
So as I mentioned, it's, it's already in all your bid, bid forms. So it's something that starts yesterday.
And we can get the word out.
Getting the word out's the next step.
Right. And I, and, and I think you ought to use your communications committee also. I saw all the different ways. And NEDCO, the Chamber of Commerce, and, and have it on the website too. You know, we have us communicate too. I think we do, anyway.
I don't know where it would go on our website at the moment. I'm sure there's a place for it. I, I just don't know where it is and where you get it that's findable.
Communication committee to, to suggest what, to do with it. That's all I was gonna.
Follow up on that, just so that I don't forget the, the policy, trying it out before we put it in stone, I, I think is a good idea. I think the only thing is, is that, I wonder if we could put a time certain to, to revisit and then put it into a, as an ordinance. Like say, we're going to try it out for X amount of months or whatever, just so that it doesn't fall off.
One of the statements you made that sort of bothers me and it's the cost to do business with the city is high. Would that be in relation that some of the companies would like to do business, but they are always underbidded by a company outside of Nikodoches? They're never in the running?
I have not been privy to the conversations. I am reporting to you what my colleagues have told me. There are two ways that the cost of doing business with the city is high. One is there's requirements that they have to meet that they, only for the city, that they wouldn't have to meet for anybody else. So getting a workers' comp policy just so they could bid on a city's contract doesn't necessarily make economic sense to them.
Is that because of amount of employees?
It's because they can do the business elsewhere without having it. So I, for one, don't necessarily think that's a good business decision on their part. It's not necessarily a good societal decision to allow it to happen, but the legislature has allowed it to happen. So that's the legal standards that we're operating under. And the question is, do you want to try to drive social policy with your purchasing power? And you're not that big a player, sorry. So there's not a whole lot of policy you can drive. If you were the state of Texas and you put it in your requirements, which the state of Texas did. Then you become a significant player in driving businesses to go that direction, even though you don't require it.
Do you think the companies would make changes like wages and work comp, performance bond? If they felt like they would be in the running for contracts?
It's possible that some of them don't believe that they will ever be in the running for contracts because of the, they're always going to get underbid. And that's what the three percent and the five percent, the state law allows us to let you add in there. So yeah, it's possible that that's enough of a percentage that those other requirements are not going to be viewed as prohibitive. But I don't know. I don't know the economics of it. And each type of contract you put out is probably going to have a different economics scenario behind it.
Thank you.
Well, I would first like to say that I'm disappointed that you are not also an economics scholar as well as a legal scholar, but we'll accept that for now.
Keep that in mind for the evaluation.
I, a couple of quick hypotheticals, just as sort of as questions. With the requirement for hub bids. With the three to $50,000. Mark, what if we have two hub bids that are lower than a local bidder? How do we address that? Is, because we have some, we do have some obligation to look at the low bid.
That's an interesting hypothetical. So you have three quotes and you have two hubs that bid lower than the local bidder. Which one do you go with? The ordinance allows you to choose the local bidder in that instance. It doesn't require you to do so?
Would ordinance allow that and policy or just ordinance? And this kind of dovetails with my second hypothetical.
So the ordinance definitely allows that. I don't think it would not be allowed. I, I think you're allowed anyway.
Okay. Well, I, part of my curiosity was. It, it seems, and I'm sure with larger municipalities, they've run into this. Where a, a higher value or low bid contractor. Has an issue with being denied a particular bid. Because of the local preference. Do we have any particularly greater legal liability in a situation like that? Or do we have any legal liability in a situation like that? Or is there a difference between policy and ordinance as far as a liability, if there is any?
I don't think there's a difference in policy and ordinance based on risk. There is a difference in risk based on the practice and procedure and how we follow, follow through with it. So each time you choose a local bidder over someone who has not the lowest price, you have to make a determination that that provides the best value to the city. Based on price and other economic factors. So if you've stated in your ordinance, but you're there, that we believe local business will generate more than we are. We already have it, so we don't have to do it every time or remember to do it every time.
So if we have a demonstrably better value, because obviously with, with using local contractors, local vendors. We get some return in, in paying local workers, paying local companies and, and their return into the tax base. So if we have that demonstrable benefit, then there's not really much legal liability there.
If we've made the determination that that is the case, we don't have any liability. But you have to make the determination.
Sorry, I, I, that may be a little too deep a dive, but.
Demonstrative to me suggests that you've done an economic analysis on every one of these and you don't have to do that to meet the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
So you clear as mud?
I think so.
Probably policy to start with, maybe a six month to even a fiscal year cycle to, to take it to an ordinance. I kind of like your description of a local, of a local business headquartered here or some number of employees or.
Yeah, the guidelines.
Workforce.
And I, I would suggest starting stronger, that they are in the city limits. And then, and then, you know, we can always loosen it up a little bit if we, you know, that's all. So instead of just having like five employees or, you know, saying that it's located within.
If they're headquartered here.
The principal office.
Principal office is in the city limits because, you know, there are people who, and I, I know Mr. Bartlett had, had some thoughts too. And, and Mr. Canizars, you all want to speak up on all this?
Only if we did that, I think it would exclude a lot of the businesses that we're trying to, if, if it's just strictly in the city limits. I need to get some feedback. If we just strict, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we just limited it to just, and, and no other.
So they have to, they have to have an office in the city. And the question is the number of employees. And you're saying all of their employees, five of their employees.
I don't know. All my, my, my principle here is start stronger and, and.
We can weaken it.
And weaken it later, instead of start weak and then, that's just the principle I would have. And, and, and you're going to be working on this, so bring it back to us and tell us how many, and, and you all know what you, what you buy. So you can start thinking about, you know, when we're buying paper, it's one thing and if we're buying, and you might actually have a different percentage. Like if you're local here, it's five percent. But if you're, you know, if you only have five employees, but your business is out in the county, you know, we might do, it, it, it's really, I'm just.
Thresholds that we've described, the three and the five, that's set by statute and is tied to the city limits. We do not get to play with that particular threshold. City limits is there. The question is, what kind of office within the city limits are you willing to take? An office that has five employees, an office that has 20% of the workforce, an office that has all of the workforce. That's the one where I need guidance.
My suggestion is, I, I would, I don't know what we buy. And I don't know the competitive, I'm suggesting you all think it, come back to us. I'm, I'm really open to it, but all my, my, my principle here is start stronger and then, and then, oh, you know, weaken it if we need to.
So the number five was a number that was vetted as being reasonable to have a significant commitment of employees working in the city. We figured that would reach a fair number of businesses, but not give it to just everybody that has a franchise open.
But on that one, I mean Staples isn't here anymore, but that would allow Staples preferential treatment in there. I mean, is, is that the kind of business that we want to, and I, I don't, I don't know.
So Staples or, we don't have Staples but Lowe's. Walmart.
Maybe we do, I mean, yeah.
Each of those would have, but those are employees that are, those are employees at that store that probably live in the city. And if they don't live in the city, they're spending money here.
But, but there's a difference between a locally owned, you know, business who's competing against Lowe's or against Staples or against. And that, and, and I think there's great value. So I, 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 I don't know that we need to decide that right here, but I think those are, I think you brought up an excellent point. And, and we're trying to have businesses come here. So really, I'm thinking, we, and we also want our local businesses to pay taxes here. I mean, I can't tell you how many businesses I have heard say, I'm moving outside the city limits then if we can't. So no, we want them inside the, the city limits. And I don't know the tax difference between, you know, what Lowe's pays or what a local, you know, contractor.
So you wouldn't have an employee threshold or you wanted an employee threshold?
I, I'm back to, you know what you're buying better than we know. And I just.
I think she wants to think about, who does that exclude if we say it's headquartered here, that you typically do business with?
So headquartered here that we typically do business with, that's what, three people?
But, but there are local people, I mean, we have jewelry, construction, we have Tipton Ford, we have paper, Elliott Electric. We have paper that we buy, we, you know, we may have plumbers, we, I, you know, you, you. I, I'm not, I'm saying, make it simple for you all, but try to think about if we, if we could do it. If we can incentivize businesses to be here in the city. It breaks my heart when I see all these businesses who, who are from other places, who, and we're trying to do economic development. Oh, you've, you've got it, okay, you could do it.
I mean, again, the, the whole premise that the city attorney was trying to say is, we were trying to make it strong by being as inclusive as possible. That was the intent, because we know by state law it has to reside in the city limits. That's a, that's a threshold we can't, that, that is prescribed, but it's just beyond that. And so if we need to, it's just a business located in the city limits with one employee and we'll just take it from there.
With the, the beauty of doing it as a policy is we don't have to set that number. And so we can just put a business principal office in here and let them come make the case that they have a principal office. And see if we agree with them or not. Now that will mean that some people get turned away and you all will get phone calls. That will also mean that some people get, get the business and you all will get phone calls.
And then by the end of that period, we can make tweaks to it and pass an ordinance and move, move on.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Bartlett was kind of looking, did you want to say something, Mr. Bartlett?
Of course he will.
Steve Bartlett. Just kind of a clarification on a couple of things. First of all, the wage rate issue. So what we follow in our construction contracts is actually the federal Davis Bacon wage rate. So let me tell you what the common response is from our contractors. So, you know, in larger companies, in large projects that use that wage rate, they have a guy who drives a bulldozer, a guy who drives a backhoe. They, that's what they do all day long. Our smaller contractors have a guy who works in a ditch, drives on a backhoe. And so all day long, they are literally paying him four different wages. And the accounting for that and trying to audit that is extremely difficult. So they literally will shy away from a contract, a smaller local contractor. And we have a few larger local contractors, but in general, they'll shy because they don't want to try to comply with that multiple wage rate issue.
Okay, but I also would be opposed to the city doing business with a company that doesn't pay their workers fairly. And so how do we do that?
So you, you, you do deploy it. Now, whether, how we audit it is a separate question. Because there's a whole exercise in auditing if, if they're complying with it or not. For state funded contracts like community development block grants, for example. There's a process where our grants consultant goes out onsite and interviews, you know, snap surprise visits and interviews. And we check that. On our contracts, we don't have something set up to do that. Doesn't mean we can't do it, but we don't have something set up to do it. But what you're going to hear from a, a guy here that, or a woman owned firm either way, that owns construction, that has 15 employees. That could do some of our project level work is that they won't mess with that kind of structure. That, that's what I'm saying. So I'm not saying the argument certainly about paying correct wages is, is valid. I don't mean that. I'm saying they are likely to not be bidders under that scenario. So now in construction, we have to publish it and we do. So Davis Bacon wage rates is part of our current contract pro forma. So, but, but you ask, why doesn't local bidders bid? That's one of the reasons, is because they don't want to follow that regulation.
Right. So, but say we get, we do away with that, then what's our option to make sure still?
I don't think we have the option to do away with it in the construction realm.
Right, but.
So, yeah, and so.
But the, the, my understanding was that this is sort of an across the board thing, not just in the construction realm.
The contracting piece is across, has been across the board and we are pulling that back and trying to tailor it for each particular type of project and each type of contract. The bidding piece for construction is going to stay static. So where it's required to have Davis Bacon, the contract and the bid package will require it.
Because we're required.
Because we're required. There may be some construction projects where we're not required and that's a question.
And then what will happen is my question.
Currently, they're going to be.
Right now, we're required. We will require it under all scenarios.
Right, but if we're talking about not requiring it where the state law doesn't require it.
That's the question to you. Do you want to go that route? You've said you don't want to go that route because you want to make sure they're, they're being paid right. And we, we agree with that. It's the multiple, multiple wage rates that we don't have an answer for.
So then my response is, it's not an absolute no, it's just okay. If we're going to have the option to do away with that, then I want something else in place. To make sure that we, the city, are doing our due diligence to make sure that employers that we contract with are paying their workers well, fairly.
I started this conversation because you've asked me several times, here's four great bids, you saw great bids tonight, they were not local folks. And sometimes the reason is because those requirements are not what our smaller local folks want to comply with. So, I mean, I want you to understand that base requirement is, so by local agreement is not necessarily going to cure that. That, that's what I'm trying to say. I, I think it's valid, I think we're doing it and we will continue to do it. But we may not get the 15 person construction firm who, who may do a great job on a small project. It's going to be harder.
Able to perform as bond either.
Right, so bonding is a whole nother issue. So we have bonding thresholds, payment, performance and maintenance normally if we're in construction. And so they've got to be able to commit resources and be qualified. And so they've got to be able to commit resources and be qualified to get bonding, there's a whole process there, and have bonding limits. So some of them do, and some of them don't, but quite honestly, to protect the taxpayer, and the taxpayer's dollars, we have to have bonding. So we wouldn't propose to you to necessarily, on a project of any size and any risk, to not be bonded. Not the same as doing a five thousand dollar repair on a sidewalk outside either. I mean, that may be a different bonding discussion, but in general, we wouldn't suggest that we don't do it. Again, that may still preclude a smaller firm that doesn't acquire bonding typically. And then lastly, and you touched on it very well, was the workman's comp. So for construction, we, it's a requirement for us, again, statutory, and we, we, we do maintain it. We deployed that across virtually all of our contracts. So I'll give you an example. When we did our Direct Connect bypass project, we had to get, acquire a lot of easements. And so we use basically a broker to help us go out and knock doors and get easements and secure it. So they're a real estate appraiser, broker. Particular one that we really liked to use, and was very successful for us, did not carry workman's comp. They owned a brokerage firm, and didn't carry workman's comp as a realtor. And so we had to go through quite a bit of steps to try to get them there. The second thing we required them to do was to have professional liability, or errors and omissions insurance. Well, for engineers, that's an everyday process, but for a real estate professional, it's not. And so we were, we excluded a large number because of those kind of insurance requirements. Professional liability can be very expensive, you know, it was the most expensive insurance I had privately. So again, it's, it's where we cut a line. We cut that line with a lot of our local surveyors. So we can't use our local surveyors, because the workman's comp and the professional liability are two things, at least a number of them don't carry. Yeah, I, I wanted you to have perspective, it's not just us excluding them, and by having a pricing differential of three percent or five percent, it's all great. But it may buy paper better than it buys services or construction. Any other questions? That, that's, that's the direction that we want you to go.
Got it, we'll go that way.
All right, being no other business, we're adjourned.